Good evening, I'd like to call to a meeting to order for Pitt County Planning Board for December the 19th. I'd like to welcome everyone in the audience and also for those that are at home in the viewing audience, at home. So at this time, I'd like to call on Tab, our clerk, to call the roll.
Kay Barefoot?
Here.
Frank Bradham?
Here.
Jacob Cox?
Lyman Hardy?
Here.
Wanda Harrington?
Here.
Thomas Harris?
Here.
Stephen Laffridge?
Here.
Clay Malloy?
Here.
Matt Nobles? Keith, Kenneth Ross?
Yep.
And William Whutton?
Here.
Madam Chair, we received notice that Matt Nobles will not be in attendance tonight.
All right, thank you. At this time, let us all stand and call on Lyman Hardy to do the prayer and the pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. The most gracious heavenly Father, we just keep you praise and thanks, dear Lord, for this beautiful day, and we just ask you to be with this board tonight, Lord, as we make decisions concerning this county that will be wise and to your pleasure, Lord, that we do make the right decisions. We ask you to bless us and guide us and be with us through these coming holidays, but this is in his name, amen. Turn to the flag.
I'm glad for the allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You have your minutes in front of you for the November the 26th meeting, and you have the minutes and the orientation session that we had. Do I have, is there any questions, or do I have a motion to accept the minutes?
Motion accepted.
Second, all in favor, raise your right hand. All right, next item on the agenda is a rezoning request from Barn Hill Contracting Company, and we're going to turn it over to Eric.
Thanks, Madam Chairman. Request tonight is by Barn Hill Contracting Company, it's to rezone nearly eighty-seven acres located on Gum Swamp Church Road in the Bellboard Township. Parcel number is eight-one-one-three-zero and eight-one-one-three-five. There's two separate parcels as part of this request, to go from rural residential to rural agricultural. As you see on the map in front of you, the area highlighted in yellow is the subject properties. You see it is two parcels, it's located right at the intersection of Gum Swamp Church Road and Roosevelt Spain Road. These are some pictures of the property, this is looking towards the property itself. This would be looking back towards the northwest, give or take, on Gum Swamp Church Road, and this would be looking back towards the south. These are some adjacent properties here, this is an adjacent single wide that's located near where the road frontage is for this property. I think it's another manufactured home, and also some other adjacent properties here as well, there's one stick-built property adjacent to it. There is an existing sand mine located adjacent to the property, and I will say, it's not really in your package, but the applicants have submitted a conditional use permit application for a sand mine for this property as well, so that is essentially the intended use of the property, and that will be heard in January following this rezoning request, if the request is ultimately approved by the county commissioners. This is the entrance, there's an existing sand mine on the property, it's inactive currently, but there is, the ponds are still there, and this is the entrance that was used to access that pit. And then this is the intersection Roosevelt Spain and Gum Swamp Church Road, this is essentially where the property, where the entrance to the property will be. And again, another shot of the subject property. They see the future land use map, calls for suburban residential in this area, it's right at the boundary between the suburban residential and the rural residential agricultural. Suburban residential is intended to include residential land uses, they include single-family and manufactured home subdivisions, those manufactured home parks, limited multifamily, commercial, office, light industrial, and public institutional uses that meet vocational Existing land uses, you see, as I noted, there's fairly limited residential uses adjacent to the property, there's some more towards the north of the property on Gum Swamp Church Road, and you see, as I mentioned, the existing sand mine located adjacent to it, and then the formerly active mine that's located on the property itself. Land designated suburban residential is distinguished by the greater potential for development and the inclusion of a broader range of land uses. The zoning map, as you see, the property to the south of it is currently zoned RA, as well as the property on the opposite side of Gum Swamp Church Road. The property to the south was rezoned also for a conditional use permit for a sand mine several years ago. The RA district's intended to accommodate very low-density residential uses, as well as associated public and institutional uses, low-intensity commercial uses, and agricultural-related industrial uses interspersed through areas that are primarily characterized as rural in nature. Staff's recommendation is that, given the existing RA zone properties that are adjacent to the property and also within close proximity, we do find it's in general conformance of the land use plan, and the site does meet guidelines provided for the RA district in the zoning ordinance. Therefore, staff does recommend approval of the request, and also want to advise that the request is reasonable in the public interest, and it's consistent with the Pitt County Conference of Land Use Plan and other applicable plans. If I'd like to entertain public comments at this time, then the planning board make recommendations, board of county commissioners, they're scheduled to hold a public hearing on January fourteenth, at which time they'll take action on the request. And with that, Madam Chairman, we'd like to open up for public comments.
Okay, we do have two people to speak, Jonathan Proctor, if you would come up, please.
Good evening, board, we appreciate you hearing the request tonight, I'm with Barn Hill Contracting Company. Just to give you a little background about this piece of property, it will be served to use, it will be used to serve our asphalt plant that's right down the road on Bears Construction Road. The asphalt is, needs sand to be mixed with the other aggregates, that's what this sand pit will be used for. It'll be a commercial mine in the sense that it'll be under the NC Dena regulations, but it will be for that use only, it will not be sold commercially through to others' companies, other contractors, that sort. We, going about looking for property for sand, first, you know, we have to find an area that has the material that will work for this asphalt sand, it's got to be a coarse sand, and then, you know, we try to find properties in an area where we will have the least amount of hens on, you know, residential properties or other uses. And then we made attempts to speak with the locals that were around this property, I contacted almost all of the residential properties that were, that connected to it, and talked with them about, you know, what our intentions were, we'd like to be good neighbors, we've done a lot of work in this area, we want to continue to do work in this area. I didn't have any negative feedback from them, talking to them face-to-face. So with that, if you have any questions for me, I'd be glad to answer them, but other than that, I appreciate if you would approve this rezoning request. Thank you.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Proctor?
Yeah.
The next person is Tim Forrest, signed up to speak.
Well, my name is Tim Forrest, and I own the property directly across from the site. I really have no objection, I just wanted to say that they mentioned to me there were a couple of things that were concerning me, and one was that the entrance, where the trucks entering and leaving would be to the northern end of the property. If you look at the slide that's to the southern view that they were showing, there's the bad curve on Gum Swamp Church Road, I think it's the only curve that's bad, but traffic, there's not a lot of traffic on Gum Swamp Road right now, fortunately, but when you do get some fast trucks and cars coming around that curve, then keep that entrance to the northern end, nearer to the Roosevelt Spain entrance, or further north than that, they assured me that's what they're going to do. And the other thing is that it's not for public sale, it's just for their use, for their asphalt plant, and there would not be just general public trucks coming in, buying sand load at a time, and that sort of thing. Those were the two concerns, they assured me that that would be what they would be doing, and that satisfies me, they were my concerns. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any questions? Does the board have any discussion, comments, questions? At this time, first of all, they want to close the public hearing, sorry about that.
I'll say it's a public comment session, not necessarily a public hearing.
Comments, all right, public comment.
That's concerning, that's what I said I was about, would it be covered?
That's part of our review process, under the conditional use permit, we look at things such as the access and the truck traffic, and so that's, it's not really anything that the board tonight would be considering as part of this request, but those are things we typically look at, yes, sir.
He's right, it is a dangerous curve running.
And according, we've spoken with Mr. Proctor before too, and they've already been in discussion with DOT about the entrance itself, and DOT, I believe, is in the process of already issuing the driveway permit for that entrance.
No more discussion, I'll make the motion we approve. I second.
Okay, all in favor?
I've got a question.
I've got a question, too.
We've got questions here before. Why are we doing this in two steps? First rezoning and then discussing the conditional use?
Well, the conditional use really isn't for discussion tonight, it's...
I know, but why are we having to do the rezoning request, and then we've got conditional use?
Well, basically, there was two options they could have pursued, they could have gone the way they're going with the rezoning, and then with the conditional use permit, or they could have, they could have gone for a conditional zoning district, but they still would have had to get the conditional use permit for the sand mine, because it's only permitted in the RA district with a conditional use permit, so...
Yeah, I guess my concern is, it's almost like, okay, we take the first step, then the second step comes along, and it's easier to approve a second step than it is now that we've already done the first step.
Well, the biggest hurdle for them was really the rezoning, the sand mine is not permitted in RR district, the current zoning district, so the first step for them was to go through the rezoning process, and so, in order to even get to the point of having the sand mine approved through the conditional use permit, they had to come and get the rezoning. Now, the conditional use permit, it's not necessarily an easier process to get through, they still have to have a public hearing, it's a quasi-judicial hearing, so there's an extra layer of formality associated with it, so there are still additional steps they have to go through in order to get that approved. So it could be that the rezoning goes through, and then possibly the conditional use permit gets denied, but that's, that's the process that they go through. Does that answer your question?
I don't know why we couldn't do it all at the same time.
Well, in terms of, well, the thing is, the conditional use permit doesn't come before this board, so in effect, they are running concurrently. So the rezoning has to go through first before they can, before the board of county commissioners can hear that permit request. So, in effect, it is running concurrently, since the rezoning and the permit will be heard the same night, the rezoning will have to be approved first, if that's approved, then they can move into the hearing for the conditional use permit.
So we don't have the latitude to discuss the conditional use part?
No, sir.
That's totally up to the county commissioner?
Yes, sir, that's up to them.
So the concerns that we're talking about, will it be part of the county commissioner consideration?
Yes, sir. As far as the truck traffic and, you know, screening and those kinds of things, those are all conditions of that permit and requirements of that permit, and so that'll be things that the commissioners will discuss at their hearing as well.
Do they have a public water out there, water system?
Uh...
I mean, because I'm concerned about digging these holes, and you know, the water goes down and goes down.
Yeah, agree, but you tell us we've got water out there.
They have?
Yeah, but what we've been told generally before is that when you have these, when you have a well, the well goes down deeper than what they mine the sand generally, and so usually this is, usually the de-watering from the pit doesn't affect the wells.
That's my concern about drinking water.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
If you say it's two steps that they have to take to get it, suppose we vote to pass the rezoning request, county commissioners pass the rezoning request, and then they deny the sand pit request, where does that leave that piece of property?
Basically, it'd still be zoned rural agricultural.
For any...
There's no conditions on it, it's not a conditional zoning request, so it'd still be zoned rural agricultural. We still feel like it's appropriate, given the adjacent property that's zoned rural agricultural, so it's not, it's not a case of where it'd be, where we'd necessarily be spot zoning it to something, so it would just be a rural agricultural piece, zoned piece of property out there. And in effect, going from RR to RA is almost sort of a down zoning, because we do require larger lot sizes in RA, and there's fewer uses that are actually permitted in RA than are in RR.
Do we have any other comments or questions? All right, let's get back to the motion, then, that Mr. Harris had, he made the motion, and Mr....
I made the motion.
Mr. Whutton made the motion, Mr. Harris seconded.
Yes, sir, we'll lose.
All right, all in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, thank you.
Your side of the table just...
Right.
I think we need also an official who's opposed to it, because it wasn't a unanimous vote.
If I don't vote, it's a yes.
Okay.
Next item on the agenda is for information to us, is concerning the Riston Historical District, and I'll recognize...
Yes, ma'am. Pursuant to our last meeting, there was a lot of discussion about the Riston district, where some of the board members expressed that they wanted some more information before proceeding on with the rezoning request from Baldwin Design Consultants. So we've done some research, we've talked with Scott Power, who is with the North Carolina State Historic Preservation Office here in Greenville. Incidentally, Scott will be coming to the January meeting, he'll be available to speak to the board, answer any questions anybody might have, but some of the information we got from him was very beneficial, I think, and again, this is really just a fact-finding report. We're not going to speak anything about the rezoning request tonight, but just wanted to give you all an update on what we have, what we've researched and what we found, so I'm just going to go through some things fairly briefly. The Riston Rural Historic District, it was placed on the National Register of Historic Places in 2003, comprises approximately sixteen-hundred-and-fifty acres, there's a hundred-and-ninety-eight resources, that's their term for the Historic Preservation Office, that's essentially anything that is either contributes or doesn't contribute to the historic nature of the district. Within that, of those one-hundred-and-ninety-eight resources, one-hundred-and-nineteen are considered contributing elements to the historic appearance of the rural community, and that comes from a document that Historic Preservation Office provided to us, it's a, this is the nomination registration form for the district, which outlines the, all the criteria that, when it was posed for listing, that would sort of justify the reasons for listing on the This is a map of the district itself, what you see in sort of the reddish color, also you can see the line that goes through, the yellow line, that's the southwest bypass. When we looked at it last month, that was actually the corridor, or the study corridor, this is the actual right-of-way, so this is where the road itself will be constructed through the Riston district. The district itself's approximately about two and a half miles in length along NC-903, you see it starts up to the north just before Frog Level Road, and goes down to Cali Stokes Road, which is a little private lane off of 903, and then also extends, portions of extend up to Pecoson Road, some up, further up Abbott Farm Road, but it's, like I said, it's approximately sixteen-hundred acres in total. According to the nomination form, some of the contributing factors for listing it on the National Register, where it has a period of significance from eighteen ninety to nineteen-fifty-three. And based off the criteria that, for listing it, the landscape and field patterns have not changed significantly within the last seventy-five to eighty years, there's also a lack of post-nineteen-fifty-three development within the district, another thing they looked at was continuous ownership of land by the same families, there's about four or five major families and major farms in that district that have maintained continuous ownership since the late nineteenth century. Also, the large farms that have remained essentially intact since that period of significance. Just some ideas about the National Register, the listing is primarily an honor, there's not any significant restrictions or requirements that come along with it unless they're seeking some kind of federal or state tax credits. Those are available for certified rehabilitation of what they call income-producing controlled buildings. In order to be registered on the prop, or to have a registered property, it just means that it's been researched and evaluated, and the Historic Preservation Office has deemed it to be worthy of preservation for its historical value. As I mentioned, the listing does not obligate or restrict a private owner in any way, unless they're seeking that benefit, such as a grant or tax credit, and then they're only obligated to follow the federal preservation guidelines if there's some type of federal funding or licensing that's required for work on that property. All listed properties and districts are considered in the planning of federal undertakings such as highway construction and CDBG block grant, or community development block grant projects, so if there's something that triggers it, such as the federal funding for, such as the southwest bypass, it goes to the State Historic Preservation Office, they review it and see if there's any kind of mitigation that can be done to sort of offset the damage or taken away from that historical value that can be done. North Carolina general statutes also provide for consideration of these properties in undertakings that are funded or licensed by the state, again, such as the southwest bypass. The only way really that local governments can preserve or enforce any kind of restrictions on these properties is to establish a historic preservation program, or commission to carry out a comprehensive preservation program, such as what you see with the city of Greenville, where they've got the downtown historic district that's been established, they have a preservation committee that reviews all changes and all requests to modify buildings or to add buildings to that district. That commission will also recommend individual properties in areas such as local districts for designation, and local government, on the other hand, the local government is not obligated to create such a commission. In talking with Scott and the folks at the Historic Preservation Office, they stated that, in answer to one of Mr. Bradham's questions last month about whether we could create an overlay district, the only way to do that, to implement any sort of zoning regulations such as that, is to create the Historic Preservation Commission. That's, that comes from the State Enabling Act for Historic Preservation, so in order to first put in any kind of overlay, we'd have to create that commission, they would have to designate it as a local district, and then they'd have to enact the regulations. In the event that you do have a local historic district, owners of property are required to obtain a certificate of appropriateness from the Preservation Commission before they can do essentially anything to that property, before they can make any kind of changes to the house, to the building, before they can build anything on it, they've got to go before that commission and get their approval, first of all. Any questions about the listing or any of that information?
Eric, what is, you listed there were a hundred-and-nineteen contributing elements?
Right.
What is a contributing element?
According to Historic Preservation Office, a contributing element is any kind of structure or building or landscape that essentially preserves the agricultural or rural nature of that district. So the older houses that are from, you know, pre-civil warhouses that are out there, some of the barns and the structures that are out there, the fact that the fields haven't changed, the field patterns and the crop patterns haven't changed, those are what they call contributing elements. So anything that, anything that's considered post-nineteen-fifty-three development, anything that's more modern that's out there, that doesn't necessarily reflect the agricultural heritage of that district, they consider that non-contributing.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, as far...
Eric, a little quick, could you go back and, just for my identification, show the right-of-way?
Sure.
And relative to the property that's being brought before us?
Yes, sir. The right-of-way runs here, the property that's up for consideration is right here on this corner, so it's in very close proximity to where that right-of-way is going to be.
There's one, looks like access inside the district, on the south side.
Yes, I think right off Abbott Farm Road, they're going to have, well, I think that might be a service road of some type, but...
There is no access.
Yeah, there's...
There's no access.
Right. Okay. Just want to talk a little bit about, one of the other questions that the board had was the type of existing uses that are out there. There are, there are not very many commercial uses out there, but there are a few, so I just wanted to highlight a few of them. When you look in the northern part of the district, sort of towards the eastern side of the southwest bypass, you see there is a commercial land use here, there's one that's just outside of the district here, this is based off of our two thousand and ten existing land use inventory, and then if you see from the south, there's a property here on Abbott Farm Road, that's the existing taxidermy, and then again, some others just outside of the district itself. To the north, this is the one that's just outside the district, this is South Side Self-Storage, it's a mini-storage building, the property is zoned general commercial currently, it is the only commercial zone properties that were within proximity to that district. This is, this is the property that's within the district, this commercial land use, SNS Trailer and Container Rental, this was a use that was actually in existence prior to zoning, we've identified it on our aerials from, prior to adopting zoning, so it is a non-conforming land use out there, but it is a commercial land use. Then this is the Stansels Taxidermy, the existing use that's essentially across the street from their request. And then, within the district, there's also some new construction, the lot that the request is on is actually part of a subdivision, and one of the lots is being built on, so this is a, this is some more modern construction that's going on in the district. Again, this is the type of development that would not require rezoning, so the residential, the new residential, the more modern residential, we have some questions as far as how that affects the district as well, but again, these are things that are just permitted with just a regular zoning permit, doesn't require any further action by the board at all. Then just outside the district, some more warehouse property, this is another commercial use that's located to the east of the district itself, and then if you go south of the district, just about a mile on 903, there's the Roundtree Convenience Store located at the intersection of Roundtree Road and NC-903 South. So in all, as far as our existing land use survey from two thousand and ten, within the district, agricultural land is predominantly agricultural and undeveloped, is around ninety-six and a half percent, residential is just a hair under three percent, and then institutional and commercial uses make up less than one percent of that district. So again, just want to reiterate, January sixteenth, we'll be bringing this request back to the board, and then also we'll have Scott Power from the North Carolina State Historic Preservation Office be here to answer any sort of specific questions the board might have as far as preservation planning, the National Register, or any of, any of the functions that his office undertakes, so with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Eric, are the residents of Riston invited to come to that meeting as well, and Scott come?
We'll go ahead and notify them again, and let them know, so that they're aware that they'll be meeting back in January, sir.
Any other questions from the board? Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am.
That's good information, thank you. Next item on our agenda is information items, I'm turning it over to James Rhodes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a few items to go through tonight. First up, in your audience tonight is your new liaison from the Board of County Commissioners, Mr. Tom Colson. So he's here watching items tonight, and we appreciate him coming to visit with us tonight, and hope he'll be a regular visitor with us. Would you like to say anything tonight?
No, what I'd say is one thing. I need to beg your indulgence next month, and excuse me, I have a medical emergency that's going to happen the first of the month, and it's going to keep me from, but I should make all other meetings after that, so if you grant my absence, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, I'd be happy.
Thank you, Mr. Colson. The other follow-up items, the Charles B. Moore rezoning, you may recall you dealt with that last month, offered a favorable recommendation to the Commissioners. That was dealt with at the Monday meeting by the Commissioners and was approved per your recommendation. That was at Heinz Crossroad there at the intersection of US 13 and Spate Seed Farm Road. The other thing that I will spend a little bit of time on is the proposed subdivision ordinance amendments. Your favorable recommendation on the amendment language went forward to the Commissioners at Monday night's meeting, also was unanimously approved, so it's now effective. And you may recall, this, with any new developments coming forward, any new subdivision plans coming through, there are some new requirements for exactly, it details explicitly exactly what the developer is to do as far as maintenance, and also allow staff to have better guidance about when these roads are now out of compliance, and we can take some type of enforcement action. So that was Phase 1. That is now approved. Phase 2, as we promised, Mr. Bratton, will be bringing back in early January, or early next year, maybe not January, but there are two prongs to Phase 2. The first one is, how do we ensure long-term that those roads can be in shape for DOT to take over, whether it's five, 10, 15 years after approval of the final plat? We'll look at such options as maintenance bonds or maintenance guarantees, for example. The other prong of that is, what about those streets, as Matt has discussed with you and some of the other meetings? What about those streets that are not to the standard that DOT will accept them? And the developer is no longer responsible, whether for a number of circumstances, may not be responsible any longer. So how do we get those roads taken over by DOT? There are state statutes in place, and we'll be bringing a report back to you on that. Our legal staff has assisted with that, we've been talking with residents of one neighborhood in particular that has some concerns, and within that statute, there are a number of options there. The bottom line is, the county, Pitt County, would have to finance those improvements upfront, go through an assessment process with the landowners, if we can get 75% of the affected landowners to sign a petition. So that's kind of a nutshell, that's what's coming back before you early next year, we'll have plenty to work on. So any questions about the subdivision ordinance?
James, don't they say a previous subdivision don't meet the standards? You said the county commissioners could put a tax out there, or how would they...
It's actually, it's not so much a tax, it is actually an assessment of sorts that would be collected through the tax office for those properties within that area. It's very similar to a service area. You're familiar with that, whether it be for sewer service area or some other type of improvement. So that would be, and again, lots of options there. How long would the Commissioners possibly consider extending that? You can go up to 10 years as far as the assessment period. We'll go through all those details with you with our staff report, but there are a lot of things to consider, and especially the three ways the assessments can be set, whether it's by road frontage, whether it's per property owner, a lot of different ways, and it can impact the amount of money that would be owed by certain property owners. So we'll bring you some examples along with that to kind of help better explain it. Any other questions on that? If not, departmental monthly report is included in your package, a lot of things going on over the last month, and also have some other information in there from news events. And as always, a lot of the information that we present here, our ordinances, rezoning requests, notices such as that, is listed on our county website, specifically on our planning department webpage, and that address is shown here now. And Madam Chair, lady, with that, that's all we had to present, and we certainly want to wish everyone a happy holiday.
Thank you, Jenny.
Thank you.
Do you have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
So moved.
All in favor, say aye. We are adjourned.
Did you have a question about...